Thank you.
You have any good?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Gary will be joining us in just a moment. We'll call this meeting of the Port of Hood River Commission to order. Are there any modifications to the agenda for staff?
Yes, we're going to remove item seven A for further development.
Seven A, okay, action item. Got it.
Everything else is okay.
Nine stayed on.
Anything of permission we don't know about?
Yeah, I'm gonna remove nine.
See why I'm leaving?
No fun.
And we need to officially open the public hearing on toll increase resolution. And then with that, we can move to public comment if there is any. Lori. Hi there.
Hi.
Good.
So I'm Lori Epstein, I'm the Water Quality Director with Columbia Riverkeeper. And I've come in every couple of years, I pop in here to let you all know what's going on. But I just, you know, with some, with a new director and some new commissioners, I just wanted to come in and talk a little bit about our bacteria monitoring program that we're doing. We're kind of right at the start of that. We usually start monitoring in May. But we, Columbia Riverkeeper has been monitoring E. coli bacteria at recreation beaches along the river. For the past fifteen plus years, I've been with Riverkeeper since two thousand and nine, and we were even doing E. coli monitoring before then. But our monitoring kind of here along the river became a little more frequent, a little more in earnest around the time when the wastewater treatment plant was kind of moving the pipe. And, you know, there were some questions about water flow and whatnot. So anyway, DEQ asked us to kind of ramp up our monitoring a little bit. And so we have been monitoring the, kind of, I think there's seven sites along the Hood River waterfront. And in the summer months, kind of the warmer weather months is when we target. So we go out, every week I've got my intern, my summer intern, Jen, I hear with me. So she's trained and done our sample collection. And we have a water quality lab in our office here in Hood River. We also do monitoring in Portland, we've got a water quality lab in Portland. And we're a DEQ program, so our, our equipment is actually on loan from DEQ. And we follow pretty strict QA QC procedures and having a group protocol with them. And we do the sampling, we submit all of our data to DEQ. And when we get the results for the E. coli, we share them on, we have a smartphone app and website called the Swim Guide. That's also on Columbia Riverkeeper's website. I've got some, kind of what I'm going over today, folks are interested in just having some materials. And there's some screenshots on the back of that that shows what the Swim Guide is. But it's a great tool for kind of pulling up, you know, what's the current water quality conditions? You know, popular swimming needs, there's like ten thousand beaches listed in the zoo. You that, you know, it's not just a Columbia River thing, it's all over. And so you can, you know, it's geolocated, you can pull up where's the nearest place to kind of swim in the river, there's description. And then it'll say what the water quality ranking is with these sites, you know, kind of based on E. coli sample that we want, that is safer, unsafe for swimming. And this is really kind of coming at, like, as a Columbia Riverkeeper, the most commonly asked question we get is people calling and saying, is it safe to swim in the river? And, you know, from us, our perspective on it is, you know, we believe, I mean, our mission is to protect and restore the water quality. I mean, we want to make sure that it's safe for people to swim in and you could catch and eat fish without worrying about getting sick. And our goal is not to like scare people away from swimming in the water. That's the opposite of our end game, you know, we are actually wanting to give people the confidence and the tools and the information to be able to like comfortably and confidently take their children and, you know, to swim at Frog Beach at Nichols Basin or to take them to the river and enjoy it. And so, you know, our worst case scenario is that someone's like, I don't know, I heard the water's bad and I just don't know if it's safe or not. So I'm just gonna not go and kind of turn our backs to it. That's not what we want. We want people connecting with the river and engaging with it. And, you know, this is kind of one of the tools that we have to make that possible. So, you know, wanted to kind of share that information. Swim Guide is a great tool for kind of getting the like, you know, I say almost near time, near real time data. It takes us twenty-four hours to get the results from when we collect the sample and process it. And so then as soon as we have those results, we post them up on Swim Guide. And then kind of one piece where I like the port comes into play because some of the sites that we're monitoring are, you know, like the event site or Frog Beach or, you know, some of these kind of port properties. You know, if we do get a high result, then, you know, we would reach out to the port and kind of encourage signs to be posted. And just, and not even necessarily like, you know, I, I would argue that I don't think the beach has to be like closed. But it's more like, just let people know so that like, if you're a twenty-year-old windsurfer and of good health, maybe you're not super worried and you're maybe not even planning on like being fully submerged in the water, fine, like make your own decision. But if you're like a mom of young kids whose kids are gonna be like, you know, swallowing water, then just giving people information so they know. So yeah, all the results are on Swim Guide. And I know I've worked with, kind of communicated with some of you on this, and Genevieve and I have talked a lot about, you know, kind of when things happen, they're in communication when there's high E. coli. If you don't hear from us, that means like things are looking good, it's been really good this season so far, which is great. But just wanted to let you all know, kind of get on the same page since there's some new folks in here who we are and what we're doing. We monitor weekly, kind of May through September, is our, kind of our main monitoring season for that. But yeah, just wanted to let you know, I don't, if anybody has any questions, I'm gonna have to answer them or I'm sorry.
Actually, chair, if I could, to show my ignorance.
Yeah.
Can you tell where the source is coming from and?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, yeah, so I mean, as you all know, E. coli, you know, comes from warm-blooded mammals. The source, you know, there can be natural sources like beavers. We actually know there's been a beaver down in Nichols Basin because they've been chewing some of our trees in the nickel natural area. It's kind of exciting, but so, you know, there can be natural sources, but it also could be like people not picking up after their dogs. Or it can be unmaintained stuff, David, or leaking pipe. And so as far as, you know, kind of identifying the species, I mean, there are some like DNA tests that you can do. Our lab, we do not have that capacity at our lab. So we really are just looking at like, you know, what, what's the level of E. coli and not necessarily what the source is. And the way we've managed, I mean, we don't see a lot of like persistent problems at the waterfront. There are some other places in Hood River that do have persistent problems. And so then it's like, then you can kind of go back and explore, okay, what's going on here? What's the issue? You know, maybe there's a leaking pipe, we found broken sewer pipes. And but more importantly, actually, um, broken sewer pipes dumping rocks which into the river and we're able to kind of trace it back. But we, we don't, we are not doing the DNA testing because it's not like, we're not seeing these kind of regular problems. And really for humans, you know, for, you're worried about health concerns, whether it's a natural source, you know, like wildlife or, you know, pets or human source, it kind of doesn't, you know, from a health perspective, it doesn't matter. So you probably don't want to like swim in that water if you pull ice high. But it can't, but anyway, the, the testing does exist, it can be done, we just don't have that capacity.
Do you see that there's eddies that actually turn the current and it goes back up river along the shore here? Or is my impression is everything's flowing down river?
Yeah, well, it's, so Jenna and I were just kind of drilling down and looking at some of the data today. And, you know, it's interesting, the places where we do have issues, at least in the past few years, it's more common at the event site. And Frog Beach has had some hits and sometimes the waterfront park Swim Beach. And we like, I don't know if we've ever gotten high E. coli at the inner hook, which is interesting. And like the outer hook, we don't see there. So anyway, I mean, to get, there could be something with, you know, kind of, you know, kind of backwater, low back eddy, you know, pushing things in or things getting caught in there. You know, water being a little more stagnant or getting pushed back upstream there.
Oh, thank you for that.
And I'll just say that the past couple of years, they've made it really, really easy for us to get the signage out and really easy to take the signage away when we get a green light at that beach. So they're very, very diligent about testing and making sure that everybody knows when we have the all clear. And the good news is there's way more all clears than there are hay caution. So I just thank you, Lori, your staff and interns have really been great with, great partner at the port.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and we are trying, we're trying our best to, well, you know, inevitably, it's always like, if it happens, it's like July weekend. We are, Jenna is doing an awesome job this summer and kind of putting that same plane like early in the week. So maybe we have that information a little bit, you know, earlier. So we're not, inevitably, it's like a holiday weekend when I'm out of, you know, when it happens. But so just trying to set ourselves up with the information kind of in advance.
But we keep this science, you know, stocked, so anybody on crew can go grab one and stick it in the sand. And at least people are informed that, you know, again, with young children, maybe you don't want to go out there.
And if anyone, you know, the app is a great tool too, it's just like the people who show up at the beach, the science is helpful information for them. But, you know, folks, folks are asking about it, the Swim Guide is a great resource for just kind of getting that immediate information for all of our sites. I've seen the sites, but I don't remember, do the signs have Swim Guide?
Yeah, 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 and say, you know, they'll say, check for the most recent results, testing results, go to Swim Guide.
Yeah, and we, you know, and I don't know if you were still the best, for, you know, there's other people.
Between me and Daryl.
Yeah, and so we, you know, I try to be really like earnest about letting you know, as soon as, you know, as soon as we go high as well, letting you know, kind of giving you that heads up. And then also as soon as it's like, you know, kind of just trying to give you that quick communications so that, you know, you all know the most current, current status of this point on. Yeah, well, thank, thank you all so much.
Thank you for coming down.
Okay.
Commissioner Shepherd, I just say, heads up that Representative Helfrich may be zooming in. So depending on where we are in the agenda, he may call in and he has a couple of words for the commission.
Absolutely, just let me know, okay, whenever you hear anything.
Does she want to speak or?
We can move to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make one comment on two D if I could.
Of course.
I want, I want to compliment the, the organization. Kevin and, and, and the maintenance team and so on and, and others who are involved in that. I think here's a case on the wire ropes that there was a recognition made that we've got a very technical area that's extremely high risk if we don't get it right. And you brought in some technical help to provide oversight to this fabrication, installation and final adjustment. I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. And I would encourage you, when you get into conditions like this, don't be afraid to reach out and go get technical help. It's, it's not a failure on anybody's part. In fact, I think it's, it's a strength to understand that you don't have the capability, but we need it. So I applaud you for going after D, I totally support it.
Great, thank you. Anybody like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through F under the.
One second.
Favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I as well, thank you. Let's see, we have one presentation this evening, Michael.
Hi everyone, if you're not familiar with me, I'm Jessica Pegel. I'm with the NCT, we've been supporting with the Public Library and we've been from the Berger Place and project. If we can actually just skip two slides. I'm there to give a quick presentation or overview from what we heard from the public, open houses related to the two tolling. And thank you first of all for anyone who was able to staff those events. They were, the first one in White Salmon was very well attended, we can switch to the next slide. We had a hundred and forty-three people sign in at the White Salmon event, sorry. And a little bit of low, a river gate twenty-two sign in there. And online we had over a thousand people, so a thousand eighty people.
That might be Rip Helfrich, just so you know, just.
Do we want to go ahead and let him in?
I did, okay.
Should I pause?
If you don't mind.
Sorry, we'll start, start.
We heard from the folks that participated. And granted, like this is still a small percentage of folks that live on either side of the bridge. But all the folks that we did hear from, there was overwhelming support for option one out of the two tolling options. And of the feedback that we heard, it was really that there was just people like the fact that there are lower rates for breeze by and local users. And they felt like tourists or people from out of the area could pay the higher rates. Of the eight or fourteen percent that chose option two, there was some comments related to, hey, we're willing to pay a little bit more if we can get the bridge faster. And there, the results that you see here are from a question that asked which of the two tolling packages best meet the community's needs. We also had some folks that didn't check either and they actually wrote in the comments neither. And of those folks, that was actually four percent, so it was forty-three people. They said it was because they feel like they've already paid for the new bridge or the swim through other tolling. So we, you know, it's pretty clear, at least from the books we heard, what, what books are saying for of the toll options. Sounds like option one is the firm one, and then if we can look to the next slide. We also heard some key themes and granted, I've got now over a thousand comments to go through. But we have started to summarize what we've heard. And the primary things that we've heard are that there's a lot of questions related to just funding and use of. And some of those include where, where is the prior tolling funds gone? And just overall questions about like, what is the cost of maintaining the bridge? And will these toll, the new tolls go to make maintenance repairs for the existing bridge? And the ports sell property to help pay for the bridge or get the bridge faster? How much the toll or how much will the tolls be on the new bridge? I actually personally received lots of questions about like, okay, this is one increase now, but will there be additional increases in the future? How long will the new bridge be told? So that's kind of related. And overall, just like demand for higher transparency around just funding tolls in general. We also received, and we can switch to the next slide. Other tolling suggests, the suggestions included some toll free days, yearly tolling rate, round trip toll rates, based in tolling, meaning like, can we take that increase and roll it out slower than just all at once? Higher tourist toll, I think that we already kind of built that into the two tolling options. Higher freight truck tolls, and that's because of a, an assumption around the just how much more maintenance is required due to the like heavy trucks. And lower rates for motorcycle users. There are also some comments that are related to just breeze by accessibility for unbaked community members. So that's not specific to toll, but it is related to just like, as we're starting to think through how people are paying for their tolls. As the, they increase, it's going to be a little bit harder for them to just like bring cash, we know that we're going to go electronic. So some questions about breeze by. And finally, we had a lot of questions related to more information was needed about the overall schedule. Crossing statistics, clarity on toll by vehicle types, so that's another communication opportunity for all of us. Toll increase, timing, maintenance, and then tolls for school buses. There were a lot of other things that came up, but since we're talking about toll packages, I decided to keep those out for tonight, but we will be giving a full summary of everything that we heard in the next week or so. Are there any questions?
Is there any way that you could tell, especially on some of the more negative comments? How wide-ranging was it? Is it the same three people, four people, six people, or could you not tell?
We can tell, we just haven't gotten that far into the data. I would say that there's a pretty good, you know, we're talking about several hundred negative comments. And so we haven't taken the time to like really cross tabulate that data to figure out like, is it coming from certain cohort or from state or community? So that's the.
It would be interesting, I think, for this organization, but also the new one that's coming up, is to get a better feel for where these comments are coming from. Are they widespread or are they very focused on a certain number of people?
Yeah.
The way you address it could be vastly different.
I completely agree. And I, we will, for our summary that we're gonna create and get to all of you in the next week or so. We will get into the weeds a little bit more on what some of those concerns are. But I think that, to your point, like, I want to probably do like a, yes.
Thank you for all of that information.
And you know how to reach me, I think, so if there are additional questions, you can just let me know.
All right, I think we have a guest, Representative Jeff Helfrich is here to chat with us. You hear us, okay?
Up, you're muted.
You're muted, sir.
How's that now? There we go. Hey, how we doing today? You know, you got a, I got some good news to give you guys. I got a, a, our project sheet came out and through the joint ways and means, Christmas tree bill, what we call it. So I was able to secure twenty million dollars for the Kickstarter of your bridge project. So that is a huge, huge thing for us. And so that gets you guys started out and I just wanted to let you guys know firsthand that we're able to get it across the finish line.
That's awesome.
Great, thank you so much for being here with us. Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you for all your work.
It, it was, took a lot of finagle and working hard, but it paid off. And I think this is the first time, I think, the district brought back that much money, representative brought that much money back to our district to get something done that everybody's going to use. Everybody can be happy about this project.
Very good news.
Thank you, Ray, thank you so much.
All right, you guys got any questions for me?
Won't be talking with you a lot in the future, my friend.
You will be. Have you guys already gone to DC?
Yeah, they just got back.
Okay, all right, well, we got that done and I got a lot of other stuff I'll talk about here coming up. Just to let you also know, the Jan, or January, that's how my week's going, June twenty-seventh, we're having a town hall. I can get you that information sent to you, just wanted to invite you guys, if you wanted to go there. We're talking about the bridge and a lot of stuff when it comes to housing and homelessness and all the other great things we got going on here in Salem and getting, turning through the last days and getting bills passed and getting budgets to cross the finish line. So would hope to see you guys up there if you can. It's gonna be from noon to one, up at the Pine, or up in Pine Grove.
We'll be there.
All right, hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, bye.
I just want to make sure that I got it.
Well, that's fantastic.
Congratulations.
If there were no more questions on the prior presentation, you can.
I'm just gonna get pulled right, right? But yeah, are there any other questions?
You can move right into.
The other thing too is the, so the resolution that's in your packet reflects the Yes, like the other thing too is the so the resolution that's in your packet reflects the really it was the recommendation from the by state working group. Michael pulled the by state working group members and and it was consensus that option one were the right structures that we're going to implement in that resolution. So there's a draft resolution in your packet. And I think Jen and I were talking, there's some other fees, back of the house fees that we may incorporate into the resolution that that have that we should probably account for, and that would be the you know, the tool to do that. So just like the the look up for license player searches and that sort of thing should probably be quantified in a in a resolution. So there may be a slight change on that front. But other than that, you should see something very close to that resolution at your July 11th meeting.
So we're not going to do the resolution today?
No. So we usually do a hearing first and then a second hearing at which time the resolution is adopted. But we wanted to get you a draft so you can anticipate what you'd be seeing on the 11th.
But we still will implement by September 1.
Correct.
This year.
Yes. There is a schedule somewhere that shows that that we're on schedule.
Okay.
We've got staff training and implementation on the back of the house with with P square. So everything's laying out. We haven't had anything. Derail the schedule. So we're on track.
So do we need to close the public hearing?
Oh, yes. Thank you. So before we move to the ED report, we can close a public hearing on toll increase resolution. And then move along to ED report.
Yes. So just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. You do have a committee membership roster. So this is an item that you'll be looking at next month in July. I did invite Tor Commissioner Commissioner to be Beaker. He had another commitment tonight. But we'll share this with him as well, and we'll discuss how you want to fill those commitments, those committees in July. The only other things that might be worth commenting on is that the new bridge authority members are being selected this evening. I believe the Clickatatt County members have already been selected. So I don't know if it might be, if you want to just take a minute just to kind of maybe talk about who's on the who's going to be on the bridge authority.
Sure. So Clicktech did theirs today. The new authority members are Commissioner Anderson, Mayor Keeler, and Doug Gibson. The alternates are Steve Yates, who is a business owner. I'm going to forget the other two names because I don't.
You got Seth Gilchrist.
Seth Gilchrist and
Eric Wilson.
Eric Wilson.
Yes.
Seth.
I got these for you by the way.
So yes, they a couple things that are a little bit unique and Hood Rivers in the process of doing theirs right now. So that we probably will have them when we get done. So we'll see if we can get them. They only they approve them for one year in Clicktech County. I think Hood River is doing four years. So that was a little bit of a difference there. And there was something else I was going to tell you.
I would just mention who that there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven applicants for Hood River County. There's we nominate or the commission nominated Mike Fox, Grant Poulsen from the city of Hood River. Mayor Blackburn from the city of Hood River was offered up as an alternate. And then Arthur Babitz. And then there were three citizen applicants, Nathan Duvall, Dog River Coffee, Catherine Thomas, who has a business development company, and then Jake Edwards, who's the county GIS manager, were the citizen applicants.
Yeah. And the the that was the other difference. The Hood River stuff had their resumes and background. That was not available on the Clicktech side, so I don't have a lot of background on Gilchrist or the other two.
All right. Let us know if you hear anything before we get out of here.
Will do.
And then one other thing too, Mark Libby is on the phone. Mark, I am excited that you made the meeting. But I do know that there were some, I wanted Mark and our managers to be prepared for any project updates that you may have some specific interest in. I know Commissioner Fox did meet with Greg and myself out at the fuel tank project and I think we, you know, staff definitely feels like pursuing an engineering, airport engineering contract just to kind of button that project up so that we can get all the moving pieces together and to make sure that that project's done accurately would be a good call at this point, but I don't know if you.
Yeah. And 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 I think that the team is doing the right right thing. This this particular project is actually on the surface, it seems like it's low risk. But in reality, it's high risk. And as we walked the job yesterday, we identified half a dozen areas that from a technical point of view, needs to be researched and make sure we're okay. When you go back and look at the contracts, the contracts were a little unclear as to who was doing what to who before they did it to somebody else kind of a thing. So there's enough uncertainty in that whole project that it's time to say stop. And let's regroup, get some technical capability in place to go research this. And then step back into it and finish it.
So. And I think Greg has an update from what we got out there with PAU.
Well, yeah, I I absolutely concur. This is one of those projects where we lost our airport engineering team and the original point of project management. And so it can use some specific engineering knowledge to make sure it's done correctly. I'm meeting with PAE tomorrow morning to kind of do a full brief and see what kind of scope is necessary to get it fast to finish line. Yeah, because there are some specific areas that if you don't know it and you've not done it before, this is once every 25 years, you install a gas tank in an airport. So there's not a lot of institutional knowledge in this, but bringing on a firm.
So, yeah, we just got to look at it.
And then similar to which Jenny being named as a advisor for the project out on the for the wire ropes, we have a similar contract with HDR Mark Libby to kind of manage the projects related to the underwater pier repairs and also the miscellaneous steel trust repairs.
From a fracture.
Correct.
Okay.
So Mark is here. If you want to ask him any questions. Obviously, we're preparing for the night closures and so that's underway. But if you have questions.
So Mark, are you going to be on site when this work is being accomplished?
Only somewhat. As as it is now, so the the trust work is starting tonight. And so Steve is going to be there while they're on the bridge during the night closures. I plan on being out there several times over the next few weeks. Once they kind of get going, wanted them to get out there, do their initial survey, which is what they're planning to do tonight to get some measurements on things. And then I kind of expect I'll have some questions tomorrow based on maybe what they found, but the the miscellaneous trust work is all very routine stuff. Nothing very complicated.
The thing that I would encourage you to do is our maintenance, new maintenance manager is going to be out there and and this is a learning opportunity for him.
Yeah.
As much as just doing oversight on the project. And while I don't expect a maintenance manager to become an engineer, a structural engineer. It would be very helpful to to gain some insight from you and your staff of what he should be looking for as a contractor progresses.
Yeah. And that's and that's kind of the plan for me to come out and work with Ryan to kind of, but I know he's out this week. So when he's back next week, we'll do that. The underwater repair firm, they tried to get out last month and the flows were just way too high for them to do their verification survey. And so they were going to be out last week and then they had a engine failure issue come up. And so they're expected to be back out there this week to do that, but we haven't heard a confirmation from them yet. So the tip for them is to get out to do a verification inspection of the areas that we identified on the plans to kind of get a confirmation of the areas to be repaired. And then we'll start going through that and reviewing it and and they'll get the materials ordered and aligned for when they come back out to do the actual repairs.
So who is their point of contact? Is it Ryan here?
Ryan is the point of contact. Now this week it's Steve. Isn't that right, Mark? Since Steve is the number two.
Okay.
Until they backfill Ryan's position.
Well, for the for the Abby's Fivota team, they'll be with Steve since he's going to be on site.
It would. It would be interesting for somebody to get a hold of Steve. And if he has not been contacted so far, it's now Tuesday.
He's here tonight. He's actually working with the obvious Fivota team this evening. Okay.
Yeah.
They are.
Their community, their communication is supposed to be coming through me with Ryan copied on on everything. So.
Thank you.
Ryan's schedule changed a little bit, so he's got a night shift for at least a couple of nights just to be here. What's that? Oh, I see. Yes, Steve's schedule. Thank you. So Steve, who's been a long time board employee is is will be working out there. That's it unless there's any other questions.
Okay. I don't think there's any committee reports this evening. We have one action.
We're good. Thank you.
There's an airport committee report. Just real quickly, we had the retail mate.
Go ahead.
Happy to feel that the committee met last Thursday on the 15th. Just some major takeaways was looking at the ability for vehicles to park in their tie down area when their aircraft is being used. Apparently there they they lease these spaces of these tie downs and then we've got transient aircraft come in and and so it's caused a bit of a friction. I'm working with the FBI. The port does not maintain the tie downs nor do we get any revenue from the tie down. So this is just a communication back to the FBI. Obviously, the issue is thinking about more vehicles on the ramp, but if they're parking right where their aircraft is, seem like a feasible solution. The only other thing is on the 24th to the 28th, the Glider Club is doing a youth summer camp. So we can expect more noise complaints because it's going to be quite quite active. Other than that, that's it. The next meeting will be August 17. And oh, and in August, I'll be bringing some recommendations from the committee for two new committee members. We had one committee member that moved out of town and then Tor was the co-chair. So it's assumed likely he would become the 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 port commissioner, one of the port commissioners that are responsible for the committee, but then his seat is now vacant. So.
We have something. I kind of reported on it in the last.
Oh, you did. About the waterfront refinement district?
Yeah, the water revenge. Yes. Okay.
Nice.
Mr. President, can we go back and revisit item A under action item? And I've been pulled from the agenda before we talk about it for a minute. Okay. We can go back.
You can do whatever you want.
Well. 21% raising grades. User pace be 20% less. Need 169. I was just wondering as far as regard to the reporting of accounts receivable to the agencies that are in the late winter. I'm wondering if we should put a 45 day between 30 and 60. Instead of having they go right, 60 go right to legal counsel where it gets expensive, maybe one more phone call from Deb or from Kevin to kind of buffer that 60 day where legal counsel gets involved. Just a suggestion. But maybe to minimize, maybe you tell them 30 days out and then they wait two weeks and another phone call and it may prevent.
I think it would go the other way of let's do 15, 30.
Either way, just 30 was a fill up market.
And we do have a 15. So it would be a 715 and a 30. But I mean, we can make those, kind of whatever you want.
But it said that 60 days and it goes to legal counsel and stuff. So maybe at 45, we have one more in house, just.
Just one that are in between.
Suggestion.
I think there's some other things in there too that maybe they consider as far as knowing that very first week. I've got a basic fundamental flaw with this that I've signed a lease person for a building with the port. And I know my payment has to be to you on the first. For me to get a an invoice from the port and use that as a excuse that I'm not making my payment, that's not an excuse. And we shouldn't even talk about it being an excuse. You know that you owe me money on the first. I further believe that we ought to take the number of contracts we've got or leases, divvy it up and spread it around and come the very first of that week. We ought to be all over this saying, when did the payment come in? If it's due on the first, did it come in on the second? Did it come in on third? Did it come in on fourth? And right about that time, we ought to be calling. That's number one. Number two, I think we ought to be thinking about an auto pay option. No. And with an auto pay option, maybe we decide that we want to give them a 3% discount or a 5% discount. If they sign up for auto pay. And then our our monitoring of it is kind of limited to when they made the payment, was there sufficient funds in the in the checking account to make payment or it wouldn't have gone through? And then you immediately take action. If it doesn't go through, don't wait 30 days. You know, get people involved in it and start pushing that. But I I'm kind of trying to think of how do we move this whole payment schedule back to where it really belongs on the first or the second or the third? But not the 15th, not the 30th, not the 60th kind of a thing. So what could we do to stimulate our leases to want to sign up for auto pay?
Yeah. Well, I think that's why they pulled it from the agendas because it means some additional massage.
We told you we'd bring you a policy, you know, last meeting. So we wanted to get something out there and we've gotten some really good feedback and we'll we'll be working on it and bring you something back for you to consider.
All right.
Why don't you go ahead with 7B, Debbie?
Okay, so we did this pilot project for the month of May and and we're still in it here in June. Although we've had to make some decisions as far as moving forward. So we're we have two two options for July because we had to get some scheduling done. So if you choose to end this pilot project, then we can we can do that. But basically, we took a look. Once we once we kind of came up with this idea, Kevin had the front office track their time in April so that we could have some things to compare to. It's a little bit difficult because it, you know, the the traffic ramps up, you know, through we're we're still ramping up and to have more traffic going through. So it's not always going to be apples to apples, but at least it kind of gave us some some benchmarks that we could look at and and make some assumptions based on that information. And so we did, as you could see from the spreadsheet that I printed out, which was page 173, you can see that we did have savings of roughly $3,800. And that's probably a little bit understated because again, May, May was a busier month than April. And so it would have on it would have taken more staff time to do what we were doing in April. It would have taken more staff time in May just because there would have been more traffic plus one extra day in May, plus Memorial Day, which also generates a lot of traffic and we didn't have a similar holiday in April. So overall, it saved us money in in true dollars, but it also it's one of those things that it's difficult to find people to work graveyard shift when someone is scheduled to work. If they don't show up, then the manager is being called at, you know, 2 o'clock in the morning because somebody did not show up for their shift. So it it's a bit of a challenging position to fill anyway to get to get the graveyard workers. But also the whole idea is that the new bridge, when it opens in 2029, will be all electronic. So we're even though there were a few hiccup. Even though there were a few hiccups through it and we're still working through some of those, even though there's hiccups, this is the direction that, that. The bridge will be going anyway, so it, it kind of forced us to look at some of these issues earlier rather than later. And with less traffic overnight by us kind of approaching this now and taking the lower traffic time period. To, to look at this and, and implement it and see, you know, what were the complaints, what were the comments? Um, it gave, it gives us a chance to kind of look at that now and, and solve these problems now, so that going forward. Hopefully, it will go smoother when we move eventually to all electronic tolling. So overall, um, overall, I felt like it went pretty well. I mean, there were definitely comments, people definitely noticed it. Um, but overall, I, I think it went fairly smoothly for us.
Do you, do you have a feel for, of the volume that want to cross at night? How much of that toll we're not going to be able to collect?
My estimate, if I had to make an estimate at this point, would probably be about twenty percent. Um, in general, our license plate recognition is only about fifty percent. Collectible, but that up until now, that license plate recognition has been for people that were what we call run throughs. Which are people that didn't intend to pay. These people intended to pay, but just didn't have that option of stopping at the toll booth. So it, it's really early because everything is a lag when you look at this, you know, the. People up front have to review the, the license plate video and then get. The invoices out and then people get the invoices and then they have to decide to pay the invoices. And so there's always a bit of a lag. So we don't have a, a really solid number yet, but I think it's probably going to be around eighty percent.
Will it offset the savings that we have here? So in a sense, we're not saving anything. Probably losing a little bit.
No, I think we'll still be saving money on it.
Well, you're only saving right here, thirty eight hundred bucks?
We don't get much overnight traffic.
Okay.
And so there were, there is a lot of hours where it costs us more to man the toll booth than what we have people going through. There's a lot of hours.
Later, yeah.
Are that way, yeah, yeah.
Any more questions? And anyone would mind, is there a motion? One seventy one stage.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve resolution. Unless Kobe would like to make his last.
No, go ahead. This is going to affect you guys. I thought about that earlier, make one more motion, but I thought this is fact, this is going to actually affect the new board coming in. I'd hate to do that to you guys. I'll set.
Before you do that. I got, does it make sense to do this on a short period for a little bit longer yet? To make sure we're going in the right direction. Uh, example, if we're, if we're really losing money off of this. Do you want to modify it where during the high, like Christmas periods where we think we're going to have more traffic? We man the, the toll booth back again for that period and then come back off. Is there any, any reason to do something like this, or is it close enough? You just call it and, and let it go?
Well, I, oh, if I can just jump in here for a second, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, what, what I would recommend is go ahead and pass this and if, if we do find issues with it, we can always bring another resolution to you. To modify it, um, unless, unless you're uncomfortable with it. I mean, it can have a, another time period in it, but you also can modify a resolution anytime you want to. So if. If this isn't working out, we can always bring another resolution to you.
You know, like the way I look at this was that self-serve checking at stores, you know, they buy us insurance. But when you figure your labor cost and you got one person, man and twelve checkout stands, your overhead is just almost zero compared to twelve. Employees and then trying to man that at ten o'clock at night. Nobody wants to work those hours.
Yeah.
You know, so I think whatever shrink there is, it's so minimal. And also, like Debbie said too, it gets our consumers, our user groups. In that, right, I wanted to drive through, electronic pays, that's a good starting point.
Okay.
I would be uncomfortable with it if I felt like we were taking the job away, but with the labor shortage and. Having difficulty filling a position anyway, I think it's.
I agree.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty two dash nineteen, operating all electronics polling operations from ten o'clock P M to six. Clock A M all day.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I as well. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Were there any directives? To staff this evening that anyone noticed?
Uh, the one that I recorded was to have Mark Libby uh, go. Uh, during the miscellaneous steel trust repairs and mentor Ryan on what to look for while you're overseeing a project like this.
Anything else that was missed? Okay.
Then you get a drink?
This, I told Rob, Robin drove me down here tonight. I told her what's going to happen is that I'm going to get a new car.
So, have you started smoking some?
It's funny, I sure, twenty years I read that, there's a clause, it's twenty years.
For the last two years. Uh, for the last two years on commission call, Commissioner Strike, I've done my best to remember to. Calling you first each time because you are the longest serving member of this board. Tonight, I'm going to give you the last word. And Kevin's going to go first to see.
Absolutely. Oh, my gosh, it's wonderful. Well, uh, Commissioner Strike, it's been uh, a real pleasure knowing you for about fifteen years. I think we first met. At uh, through P N W A when I was out on the coast. Um, so it was kind of fun to, to. Look into your past here at the port. Patty was nice enough to find uh, Hobie's original application. To be appointed uh, to the commission, August twentieth of two thousand two. Well, well, wait till you hear this. He graduated from Hood River Valley High in seventy seven. He leads in with that. During, uh, he, he opened also with his employment with United Telephone Company. He was there for at least eleven years as a lineman. Cable splicer and eventually moved out to an outside plant engineer. Um, he had been a member of the budget committee, committee as of spring of two thousand twenty two. And the list of the activities that Hobie's been involved with here as a resident is impressive. The Chamber of Commerce. Sister City, uh, Sheriff's Department, Little League, Lions Follies, Veterans of Foreign Ware, uh, Wars. Hood River Saddle Club, Fourth of July Fireworks, Animal Shelters, Oregon Site for Kids. Future Farmers of America, Hood River County Fair, American Cancer Society, Muscular District B, and both public and private. Education systems, uh, doing a number of fundraising events uh, for uh, our schools. And, and in here, he mentions as far as his desire to be a member of the commission. He says, my past experience ranging from working for a large corporation to being a small business owner has prepared me. For making good sound decisions in regard to employees, people skills, scheduling and budgets. And he finished his application by saying, the Port Waterfront Development Project has the unlimited potential. Of evolving from a diamond in the rough to becoming the city of Hood River's crown jewel. In essence, creating diverse yet unified community environment. And I think you actually helped accomplish that vision. During your twenty years, okay? Thanks. So uh, staff uh, talked about how we could uh, recognize you and. Uh, Genevieve was nice enough to put together a plaque that we will place on a bench down the end of Marina Green. Uh, by the yacht club and it says, in recognition, twenty one years of exemplary service. To the constituents of the Port of Hood River, Hobie Strike, Commissioner, two thousand two to two thousand twenty three, Port of Hood River.
We got some supply chain issues, Hobie, but that.
Well, that's great. I, uh, I would say is that I think we're in great shape. I think the board's in great shape. We've got a great staff, um. The new E D and finance director, um, it was, it was tough. It was tough to decide not to go and run again. But, um. Wish you well.
Commissioner Chapman's got a, I'm going to give each commissioner a chance to say something she'd like, oh, she'd like to go next.
So I would like to present these. For over the years because I know it's not easy having him be. Now, doing all of the stuff that he does.
You mean a sounding board?
Thank you very much for all of your support.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Very nice of you. Thank you.
I didn't prepare anything to say. This team you sitting here over here with your really nicely ironed shirts.
I do. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Your input and your expertise. And your humor and your wit and um, your knowledge to read this.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And your paper stack.
I know.
I just want to add to what's said, you know, I, I've considered you a friend for a few years now, but I've gotten to know you. And I'm just so impressed with how you deal with yourself, you know, in this group of vendors, so we've got. You're steady, what I call steady Eddie. You can kind of work your way through a complex issue. You can break it apart and you've got a lot of common sense and I, I really appreciate that. I learned a lot from you in the last couple of years that I associate with it. And I wish you nothing but the best.
And I am going to echo that. You've been a mentor since the moment I came on this commission. I really appreciate it. Um, we've had some really good discussions and you've taught me a lot about how to serve on a board like this. And uh, the commission uh, was talking amongst themselves on, on. How we could properly acknowledge um, what you've done for the community, uh, for the port. Um, and so I'm going to read something and I'll pass this down to you. This is from the commission. Um, and we have kept this a secret from everyone except Kevin. Um, so you can open that if you'd like and you can read along with me. Uh, this is a proclamation of the ports of Hood River. Whereas Commissioner Hobie Strike has served on the Port of Hood River Commission since, since September third, two thousand two. And whereas Commissioner Strike's final term ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, completing twenty years, nine months and twenty eight days of service. Making him the second longest serving commissioner in the history of the port. And whereas during his time on the commission, he has served as president of the commission in addition to chair and vice. Chair of the Hood River Urban Renewal District, all while fighting successfully, successfully for local business and aviation interests. Whereas Commissioner Strike was an active participant with Special Districts Association of Oregon and the Pacific Northwest Waterways Association. And whereas the Port of Hood River Commission believes that due to meritorious service to the citizens of the port district. Commissioner Hobie Strike is deserving of an honor equal to the service he provided to this district. Now therefore, the Port of Hood River Board of Commissioners resolves as follows. Section one, the bow hanger at the Ken Jernsted Airfield in Hood River, Oregon shall now and permanently be named the Hobie Strike Hanger. Section two, this is effective as of June twenty first, twenty twenty three. Adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the Port of Hood River this twentieth day of June, twenty twenty three.
That's so cool.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Pretty amazing, guys, a lot of work. I just thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's hard to keep secret. I think you need to make a motion.
Um. Do we need to beg or call a motion?
That is so cool.
I will make a motion of, approved to approve the resolution.
This has been a wonderful experience, just twenty one years that's gone by fast and uh, learned a lot. I've learned a lot, uh. Um, part of being business for myself, where you always call the shots and your decisions are the last one. When the board and, and the port of Hood River has made me realize that. You're not always right. And you have to negotiate and willing to take uh, the backseat sometimes and your ideas are good ideas, but not great ideas and uh. With that being said, just thank you so much.
Thank you, Obie.
Wow.
Great job.
And with that, we are adjourned for the evening.
Wow.